So with great apologies on the delay, the meeting of the Deerfield Planning Board today on July 12th, 2021, at 7:35 is called to order. And I will read the whole new executive order because in fact it is a little different. And repetition is always a good way to remember things. This meeting is held in a hybrid fashion with the opportunity for both in-person attendance and remote participation in accordance with Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 Act, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including an extension of the remote participation provisions of his March 20th, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual disc broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should have made plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. For purposes of in-person attendance, the town of Deerfield hosts the meeting in the main meeting room of the Deerfield Municipal Offices with remote participation details noted on our website. So we are called to order. One of the things that we've done somewhat informally at our other meetings, well, maybe at first I'll identify the board members in attendance. Anne Mary?
Anne Mary Cludier, present.
Denise Mason?
Denise Mason, present.
Rachel?
Rachel Bynum, present.
Kathy Vitroba?
Kathy Vitroba, present.
Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester.
Andrea Leibson?
Andrea Leibson, present.
And Annalee Wolfko, present. So we have a full planning board and a quorum.
Hi, Annalee. We need to, I'm sorry, I should have done this. We need to identify members who are virtual.
All right, so the virtual ones are.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Good, no, keep us on our toes here. Anne Mary, thank you. At a couple of our previous meetings, we sort of informally have begun each meeting talking a bit about our meeting norms. And I think it's a good practice for us to be reminded at the beginning of our meeting, sort of our rules of the road, which we've talked about with one person speaking at a time. To speak, we would raise our hands, or hands would be raised, and the chair would acknowledge the cue. And also, there is the Deerfield Code of Conduct from June 2020 that we want to observe the professionalism consideration, no intimidation. We are respectful, common courtesy to all, refraining from using a raised voice. And a reminder to all of us that we are in fact setting an example for others who will be appearing before our board. Are there other principles that people would like, members would like to volunteer or think about for our next meeting if you would like? That sounds.
I don't know if it's a principle, but we just need to know if you're not coming. So that we always know ahead of time.
Thank you. That's good.
I think also, we often mention that information that's repeated is complicated in a long meeting. In fact, it's always messy because one person may not feel that they're repeating information as much as is mentioned in their home view. So I think we always mention that we'd like not to hear the same point made over and over again, but that we also balance that with a sort of understanding. But that's, those are in dynamic opposition, so it's complicated.
We have lots of tensions. Thank you. Oh, those are good, those are good additions. Thank you very much. Reading minutes of our June 7th meeting, Anne Mary?
Before we do that, I'm sorry, I had my hand up, but I don't think you noticed. I couldn't really hear all that Rachel said. And although I caught the gist of what she said, and I agree with what she's saying, I'm a little concerned about my take, my ability to take notes ongoing without being able to hear everybody.
How about if we all here, do a little testing, one, two, three, and you can let us?
Is that better, Anne Mary? No.
That was better.
A little better, I'm sorry. And all I was saying was it's just complicated.
Right, no, I get it. Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Kathy?
No.
And you can hear me?
And this is Andrea, can you hear me?
Not great.
You can download it in two seconds.
Share. Oh, boy, okay.
Oh, God, no.
I will pass my.
It's a horrible echo.
Yeah, we can count.
Hey, Annalee, this is Denise, can you hear me? Okay, considering we're having so many issues, I know what you've read from the governor, but I would suggest that we continue this meeting to another night until we can figure things out because this is really difficult on so many different levels. You're muted, Annalee.
We're going to go through old business. And if that is not a reasonable way to have the meeting, then we can reschedule.
Okay.
Oh, except, no. Anne Mary, you're doing the minutes.
Yeah, I mean, I guess ostensibly I could do minutes from a recording tomorrow, but I can't really hear what's going on.
Just a moment, please. We might have a suggestion here from our technicians. Denise, can you hear us?
I can.
Anne Mary, is there anything you can fiddle around with on your computer?
I can hear you clearly. I could not hear Kathy Sylvester when she spoke. And Rachel, it was difficult hearing her as well.
That's the issue. We can hear you, Annalee, but we can't hear anybody from the other mics.
Can you hear me now?
Oh. And you can hear me now, too. Because I'm on Zoom now.
Right.
This is hybrid. This is the whole issue of hybrid, is that you can't make all gods happy at the same time.
I'm getting in my car.
Oh, Anne Mary.
For the audio? I think that might be what's causing that.
Let's do a test of everyone again. Rachel?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me? No. You can't because you're on the PA.
Denise, can you hear me?
Yeah, I could hear that. And this is Andrea, can you hear me? What?
Yes.
The answer is no. Annalee?
But I can hear Andrea. I could hear Andrea, and I could hear Rachel. I can hear you, and I, we can hear Annalee straight through the microphone. But some of you, it sounds like Annalee's microphone's picking up your voice. So that's how we hear you.
And Annalee, I have to say, there's a very strange phrase that is on my screen right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That should not be there, maybe?
No.
That's better.
Rachel?
Oh, boy. Hey, Annalee, another question. Is there anybody in the audience there physically?
Yes. Mr. Upton's here. We have one public guest in the audience and then a number on Zoom. Well, we can't have a meeting if people can't be heard. And we've been spending 45 minutes trying to do this.
Could we repeat minutes of last, for the last meeting and get those out of the way? Because that's just.
She's on her way here.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
So I'm inclined to feel that we need to reschedule the meeting for a time when the town can inform us that it appears that everything is working well, yes.
Just to be clear, for our procedure, that first paragraph, when you read that, it says that there's technical difficulties and so on. So that will continue as in-person. It doesn't matter to read one way or another. I understand what you're saying as far as postponing and rescheduling, but I just don't want you to get in trouble here with what's.
Thank you.
It says the meeting will not be suspended.
Unfortunately, right, two of our, I mean, we do have a quorum, but two of our members, well, Anne Mary's on her way.
It'll take me 15 minutes to get there. Do you want me to come down?
I can come down.
Yes. If you're going to continue the meeting, I'll come down there, but I can't do this.
Let's, if we.
And who, and who's, and who's going to get us in trouble? Is someone going to report us to the police?
I mean, I can hear you. You, Denise, you can still hear us. You can hear me because I'm the main.
I can hear you.
So I could actually even just move the microphone. Tim, your hand is up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I believe the law that was amended by the governor allows for full remote until April 2022. And this hybrid thing is an option. So you, as a board, can decide that the technology of Zoom works, but the technology of the hybrid system doesn't work. So perhaps your next meeting, you might want to seriously think about the difficulties of this hybrid versus, you know, either all in-person or all Zoom.
Right.
Because I think it does, it does allow for you to just be remote.
Thank you, Tim. In fact, that is on our agenda, and Anne Mary just showed up. Hey, Kathy and Denise, if you can come, that would be great. And in the meantime, we'll just move forward.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, see you.
So, Anne Mary, we might shuffle the agenda a bit here. Anne Mary's pulling up her computer, and she can let us know when she's ready to talk. I mean, we're just wondering if there's any corrections or additions to the minutes.
I have one correction. I have one correction to the minutes, please. At the beginning, in terms of who is attending, my last name is spelled oddly. And during the, inside the minutes, it's spelled correctly. So if you could just fix it in its first iteration.
I also have a. I, yeah, so I'm not on it at all, but I was in attendance. So my name should probably be added to in attendance.
Anne Mary?
Did you hear that?
Did you hear that Kathy Vitroba needs to be added as in attendance because she was there? When you're ready.
Can you all hear me?
You can. Anne Mary, you let us know when you're ready for us to move forward. That's fine, that's fine. Anne Mary, should we continue? Okay. Old business, I think it's important for us to have for the minutes, and just for the record, that at the June 12th, 2021 special town meeting, the bylaws that the planning board initiated were passed. Those were solar, site plan review, and. And, and site.
Formula-based.
Site plan review, right. Formula, and then formula-based business. And the, was passed, municipal frontage was not passed at the, at the annual town, at the annual town meeting, correct? And we still do have pending for potentially a town meeting in October. There is the issue of select boards, select men going through that terminology, going through our zoning bylaws. And then also, there's a very small technical correction to our floodplain review bylaws that were approved several town meetings ago. So, thank you also to people on the, in the community, and certainly the planning board, and many people behind the scenes who helped. It was a, quite a yeoman's effort on many people's parts. And we really, really appreciate it. That's what makes town government work, is when people work and show up, right? New business, and as Tim Hiltzy was suggesting, the first thing on our new business agenda is to discuss our meeting format going forward. And maybe there won't be a whole lot of discussion. Our options are hybrid, Zoom only, or in-person only.
Can we? Want to speak into that? So, is, is it an option for us to have the board in-person, but comments on that form of hybrid? So that we're here, and if members of the public want to arrive via the Zoom meeting, that they can do that? That's what I'm wondering. So hybrid, being us being hybrid is complicated. We've just discovered that tonight pretty big time. But a hybrid meeting where the public is zooming in, is that, is that as complicated?
Well, I did see today comment that we can decide to have just the board's board in attendance. And does anyone else remember what we're seeing? Did anyone else see that?
I mean, we were, we used to be on TV, and if somebody had a thing, it was close enough. It came in, oh, who'd come in? Right here and say, you're talking about my thing right now, I need to be here. But that is kind of what would happen on Zoom. Somebody, this was their issue, I'm the neighbor of this person, I want to hear about it. Then can they zoom in as opposed to coming in person? Public comment. Like, the board's here, but a public comment comes in via Zoom.
FCAT, you're only recorded, you are not live? Or are you live also? Because I.
You guys are live on Zoom, but it's not being broadcasted from Channel 15 because there's some technical problems with that.
Is that just today, or is that always?
During the pandemic, at some point before 2021 came about, there was a thunderstorm which caused a blackout or a groundout and dried up some of the equipment we're looking to get it fixed. Some solutions, and the computer that we were using to stream the meetings broke down. You're having a.
That's fine, yeah. Sounds like it's not going to work. Okay. So our options appear to be to potentially have, or what we're talking about right now, is in-person, in-person board and in-person public if public chooses to come, and otherwise not engage Zoom. Is that what you're suggesting?
I was saying engage the public on Zoom.
With, with the planning board present. That seemed to work with Tim. You could, you could, you could ask, you could address. So I'm saying that that seemed to work to have the public comment be via Zoom. They could also be present, but all planning board members would be physically present. That seemed to work. Would you?
Yes. I feel that.
Anne Mary is saying that she would rather have it be Zoom only.
Yeah, in terms of accessibility, people have issues, people have other issues. It just makes it so much more convenient, I think, for lots and lots of people.
Were we having any of these technical difficulties via Zoom only?
So couldn't we do what we're normally doing, but it's just not working tonight, right? I mean, it worked fine for the select board meeting.
No, it actually didn't. David was remote and was zooming in, and there was terrible echo and reverberation. It's very hard to understand anything he was saying.
Jeff Upton and the public?
Yes, just a, I'm just curious, I've taken back a little bit about why you do not want to have the public in an open meeting.
No, that's not what's being said. That's not what we're saying at all. We're talking about whether people are physically present. And the suggestion was, well, we all, well, by the governor's order, we have to do some combination. They could, but actually, we have a planning board member who says she would prefer to Zoom. She would prefer.
I mean, I believe if we were having a public meeting, and certainly if people from the public showed up, we would allow public comment absolutely.
Yeah, no questions.
So, again, it seems that our options are either Zoom only.
The way it was sounding like it was, you wanted comments coming to Zoom.
No, I think it was, do we all come through Zoom? Do we all come through Zoom? Do we all come in? Or do we do this hybrid that's not working? That seems to be our choice, is that we all come in or we all do Zoom. They're the only two that actually work. That, you know, so I think your point is for some people, coming in is just not possible. So Zoom is possible for everybody. It's probably the most inclusive yet. Well, that's true. If they don't have, yeah.
But they could also phone in, and everyone has a telephone.
I. Why, but I think what I was saying wasn't so much that all public comment would only come in. I'm just saying that if people really felt uncomfortable coming in, they could make public. But I think that us staying here is easier for us to be presenting ourselves as a board and to be presenting our. That's all I'm saying. Because I think that, I feel more inhibited by Anne Mary or Kathy or Denise not being here than public. I mean, we've got plenty of meetings where it's just us. So it's not like, so that's what I, that's all I'm saying. In fact, the public entering into the conversation through hybrid, I think is important. I just think it's really hard.
Also, too, if we make a decision now, it doesn't mean that we can't reconsider in another month or two when I know that the town is planning on getting some additional technology. And.
No one's trying to prevent anybody.
Absolutely.
Taking part or getting in here.
Well, I was thinking across the boards, if we had consistency, you know, the select boards opened up town hall, people can come in. There's, you know, time for public comment. And that, you know, the finance committee, same thing, you know.
Understood, understood, right.
If we're, everybody doing the same thing, all the boards across, you know, it just makes it easier for the public to understand what's available and what's not.
That's right. So again, I guess, I mean, we have the option of hybrid in-person or Zoom.
Well, can we just try the hybrid one more time next month and see if we can make this work? Because I think that's the most popular for everybody.
Well, I think that is also a real need. I think that we're not out of the woods. I think that there is a delta variant. I think that we do have very fragile people in our community. I think that we don't all have to, you know, shut about invisible disabilities or whatever people may have. But I think that engagement was certainly increased from what I saw as a planning board member on Zoom. I thought that there were more people, but we did not really. All right, I think the best thing to do in that case would be to make a hybrid work.
Our next meeting is August 2nd. Our next regularly scheduled planning meeting is August 2nd. So maybe if I could have a motion about the format that we should use for the August 2nd, 2021 meeting.
I make a motion that we do a hybrid meeting.
Second. Okay, so that's, Anne Mary has moved, and Kathy has seconded that we have a hybrid meeting on Monday, August 2nd, and then to be determined after that. Is there any further discussion? Okay. So we'll have a roll call. Anne Mary? Oh, no.
No, it's the other, it's removed.
Right, right. Anne, Anne Mary, yes, I, Denise is en route. Okay, Rachel?
Rachel, I.
Kathy Vitroba?
Kathy Vitroba, I.
Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, I.
Andrea Leibson?
Andrea Leibson, I.
And Annalee Wolfko, I. So our meeting on August 2nd will be hybrid with the public certainly invited to attend either by Zoom or by in-person, whichever they choose. Our next issue for new business is that Treehouse Brewing Company is planning on coming to the planning board for Phase 2 of their renovations and operations. And we'll need to come forward with our site plan review. So the. the next available opportunity for that would be our August 2nd meeting. Which would give us two weeks for the, for the postings.
Then they'll bring, they'll send real good, because the CTE have a lot to do with that in terms of.
Yes, I imagine, I mean, in the previous site plan review, they gave us a lot of information and I, I know they've started the process with town people, but I haven't heard specifically what they'll be giving us, but I'm sure they're with plenty of advance notice considering how much information was given at the last Phase 1, Phase 1.
May I ask a question? Do we have a time? A timeline that we request information from, so they need to prevent, provide it to us within a week of the meeting? Within 10 days of the meeting?
At, at this point, or from earlier in the year, we've mentioned that any, any materials that would come to us would be by the Thursdays before our Monday meeting. Welcome Denise. So, yes, Thursday before the Monday meeting, but we can ask if they can. So, could I have a motion to schedule the public hearing for Treehouse Brewing? Yes, it's a public hearing. The beginning of the site plan review for Phase 2. Couldn't we have a second?
A second, second.
And is there any discussion? All right. Well, we'll call.
I would leave the discussion, I think that they should come in early so that we can, because if they do have presentation here, they should come in early so that we have mastery clarity around how this is gonna work, if they're gonna make the presentation on Zoom.
That would come in early.
Treehouse. I mean, no, but whoever, but so that we would ask them to come in early so that we were, that's okay.
Running by staff.
Yeah, so that, that where we're, we were, you know, test case, you know, we got it going on.
We, screen share and everything else, right.
That's hard enough when we're doing it in person, as Jeff pointed out, this PA system isn't great, the sound goes, it was made for schoolchildren to have lunch in here, the sound is supposed to go up there and so.
Hey Rachel, could I just say something, when, when everyone's talking, speak right into the mic because from home you can't hear.
Yes, and that's another thing about this room, so it's just, the room is tough as well as Zoom. So that's, that's the thing. But I would think that if Treehouse came and we would kind of work it out so that it was really a good show, that's all, because I think that there's not.
And note that we already have a 6 o'clock executive session before.
Oh, well, that's so we can be somewhere else and they can be out here, that's not us.
Okay.
That's Rachel, I forgot about that, that's that same day.
Right, all right.
And that's just us, the executive session is not for the private sector.
Yes, I understand.
All right, any more discussion about the Treehouse public hearing on August 2nd at 7:00, at the 7:00 PM planning board meeting? All right, we'll have a vote, Anne Mary? Denise?
I.
Rachel? Kathy Vitroba?
Kathy Vitroba, I.
Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, I.
Andrea Liebson?
Andrea Liebson, I.
Annalee Wolfco, I, so we will have the public hearing on August 2nd. And now almost two coinciding conversations really in new business is this is really a good working meeting of discussing planning board priorities for our coming fiscal year, I'm not anticipating that we will finalize those priorities this evening because the second piece of this conversation also is determining, are there other newer new and improved better ways to engage the community in both coming to our meetings as well as helping give ideas and opinions on what our priorities should be for the coming year. Pardon me?
There's our reporter person right there.
There's our reporter person.
That's part of it.
Well, that, I think, yes, starts, let's maybe start that part of the conversation is for engagement, I mean, it's, it's wonderful when we can have articles, otherwise postings cost money, but depending on potentially what we want to do as a.
I see in, I see in the pandemic that the reporter has given more attention, they've got that second page, they're really working the local news, what's happening in Brooklyn, what's happening, and I love a little more proactive from the recorder, I think, I'm gonna push that a little bit because to, to, so that the public is thinking about those things, not just reporting on what it was, but what's coming up.
So potentially maybe that would mean talking with, say, Chris Larrabee who has Deerfield on ways of having that be occur, okay? One thing that can help with some public engagement also is I, I do recall and I'm sure Rachel and Anne Mary and probably even Denise recall in the past on the agenda there would usually be, at the end of the agenda, an opportunity for public comment. And somehow that has dropped off our routine agendas, but that seems like that could be an opportunity to include back on again, so, okay, agenda. I sent to the planning board today rather dense several paragraphs from the Attorney General's Office on open meeting law, talking about, or addressing the question of social media and reaching out to social media, and as I said, it was fairly dense and I'm interested in what the planning board members have to say from their interpretation. Certainly, my takeaways from that were that we can certainly post on social media sites both announcements of meetings and also request information from the public, but and I can. Subject to interpretation, right. There, there, we have to have very, very careful avoidance of the appearance of either giving an opinion or appearing to deliberate, especially if there is a quorum or there are other, other planning board members on the social media sites, and in general, that's to be assumed, I would imagine.
Not necessarily, some of us eschew social media.
Exactly.
Right.
And so.
They're not there, and that means you're, you're automatically cut off, and I think that that's the complication with the straight to, and again, I would think that's a town. If the town has a website, you can go to it, that's a kind of forum of social media, as it were. And I, I worry using social media to, as a vehicle for just one board especially, like we want it across the board, that's all what kind of people, like, this is, you could have a, like the Deerfield Police has a Facebook account, so does anybody, you know, what, what usually comes through that? What kind of information is, you know, more celebratory, it's not so informational, if the Deerfield Police just counted on that for their information, that would be problematic.
Right, I mean, I think in my mind, there are two things, we want information only, like tonight's the meeting, please come. And then, hmm, you know, we're going to be discussing at this next meeting, our proposed zoning bylaws on da-da-da, please let us know. You know, what are your ideas? And is that something, I mean, I'll have to admit, I've never gone to this Deerfield website.
For comments. I would strongly oppose that. I, you know, I think it's a great idea when, you know, to, to put on Deerfield Now or onto Facebook, that there's a meeting and we encourage participation, but I think it's a big mistake to open up any discussion because I, I am on social media and it's not pretty.
And the moment you post it, you're opening, you're opening a commentary.
You are, yeah.
And that, and people feel represented because they posted on there, who may or may not come to the meeting, and who may or may not have seen that conversation, but feel like they've heard when it hasn't been officially heard by us, and I wouldn't want anyone to feel like they would be represented when we haven't heard.
Yeah, and too many things misconstrued.
I, I agree. Yeah, I, I think for just, you know, stating that there's a meeting, I think that's great, but I would not encourage any kind of discourse.
So can I, can I ask, we were, we're talking about.
Wait, 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 I want to hear, but even stating a meeting?
You still have comments. Like if you post on Instagram, we have a meeting, you still have comments underneath, you have likes and whatever, I mean, that's, that's what it invites, it's not.
So I was going to ask, does the recorder still have a calendars page, you know, so that we could list things, that would be a very public forum, and we would be able to say, here's a meeting, here are the things to be discussed. I don't know if they do, it seemed to me they don't have.
Do you know if that's because money?
No. That's, that's again, that's online only, isn't it? No, it's also?
Yeah.
And I feel like posting that there is a meeting on the Deerfield Now page or whatever, you may get comments, but as long as we don't comment back, I find that page very helpful to bring attention to, to things going on in town that I might not otherwise know. So I feel like it does have some use to just post it, that there's a meeting tonight, we're gonna discuss accessory housing or whatever it is.
Well, I feel like those sites are super helpful in that they do that, but I think that's different than us posting that. You know what I mean, I think that Trevor and Raina and some other people who run other Deerfield sites take it on and they do that, and I think that's a great service, and I'm really grateful that they do that. But I think that if we were posting it, it would be a different thing. And of course, anybody can post whatever they want and everybody can comment on it, but I think that we need to stay out of it.
I don't understand the difference between if we were posting that there's a meeting tonight at 7:00 PM versus if Trevor is posting that.
Because, well, in my mind, I'm, I'm sure there are others, the issue that concerns me is that if I were to post on Deerfield Now, I'm not on Deerfield. If I were to post on Deerfield Now, there's a meeting tonight, someone who may, someone who can't make the meeting may make a comment that they think that I, as a planning board member, will take into consideration at that meeting, but I may not have checked my Facebook. I may not have, you know what I mean, I, I don't want to be held responsible for all the comments that are then on that page and for representing them, you know, not that I don't want to represent people, but I feel like this is the, this is how you do it, like you do it here in town in, you know, our meetings.
What if there was a disclaimer for informational purposes only?
I still think that whoever runs those pages should do it, I, I still, I still wouldn't personally do it, I feel like that's, you know.
I won't be at the meeting, but. Couldn't we just, could we just?
Kathy, yes.
Could we just post the Town of Deerfield link on the Deerfield Now or post our own planning board agenda on Deerfield Now so people can look at it, we're not, we're just posting that there is a meeting, we're not commenting, we're, we're just saying, this is what will be available on this date, and it's what's already on the Deerfield Massachusetts page.
Okay.
Lead them there.
Kathy, what you're saying is then just planning board meeting night, 7:00 PM, check out the Deerfield website.
Link, and link.
We're gonna link it back to the Town of Deerfield page, which is kind of where we want people to go anyway.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, it's an option, that's all I'm saying, I, I totally agree with this conversation because it's a slippery slope, it can, it's, you know, in doing something that you think is gonna be beneficial and informative and help people, you know, there, there could be another side to that where there's an unintended consequence or outcome that you're not predicting because that's not your motivation in putting something on Deerfield Now, but something as a, as a link that brings them back to our Town of Deerfield page, which has a plethora of information that they could draw off of that might eliminate that personal position that could be interpreted from something that's posted on Deerfield Now by a planning board member.
And who would do that?
Anybody that wants to.
I've been doing it as a chair, I've been posting, but I've also been saying one or two agenda items, which can be omitted, I mean, I think again, the, the goal of this discussion is trying to get more public engagement, so that, I mean, I, I fully believe in representational government and that we are all here representing the people of Deerfield, not what I particularly think should happen to the zoning bylaws. So, you know, there are incremental ways we can move forward with that.
Can I make a suggestion? I think this is an interesting conversation, but I would like to, I would like to table this conversation for now and think about it a little bit more because it is 20 minutes past 8:00 and we have just started.
Yes, I mean, essentially, and I mean, we might circle back to this, yeah, I guess as I was saying, even in terms of the priorities, which we'll be discussing next, I'm not necessarily expecting that our priorities for the coming fiscal year, we will make a decision on tonight, because in fact, it would also be really nice to know what the community wants.
I do think that we should have a town meeting, town meeting signs made up that we can put in people's lawns on Saturday or, you know, the week before town meeting, so people know that it's that week. I do think that we should have both Saturday or both Wednesday signs, a package of each that we can put in municipal volunteers' lawns.
Particularly with special term meetings.
Yeah, exactly, that way people are reminded and we can engage participation, because there are people who are engaged through the computer and then there are people who are engaged through, you know, in real life, what they see in town. We all have a lot, a lot going on, so all of those visual reminders. It's science, the more you see it, the more like we were. So I feel like if we're talking about the fiscal future, I feel like that's a few hundred dollars that would be lost.
And could I make a suggestion, not just in South Deerfield because people live, do live in the outskirts. So I think it's great when things are posted here, I don't necessarily see it all the time.
Right, but wherever we, you know, signs that remind people to come and gate.
Okay, so it sounds as if the the general gist was if there is going to be any, if, big if, any social media posts that they would be done with great care, and we will discuss that later, in the meantime, to sort of check out what is possible with the town, with the town website, with the recorder notebook and people's rumination between now and our next meeting. Okay, good, thank you, good. So our priorities, I sent to you a very unprioritized list that, of suggestions that have been made to me in the last six months. And I don't yeah, if you have them in front of you, I mean, certainly one of the questions was circling back to the accessory bylaws that we began, second one, which I actually feel quite responsible for, and I think the board would probably agree, is that we did say that we would come back to address small-scale solar, and that's most likely a reasonable goal that we could have for what will probably be a town meeting, a special town meeting in, in October. Signage has been mentioned off and on by a number of people as something that our sun bylaws are quite a bit in need of revisions. The issue of quote "upzoning" the town center, as I understand that, that would be to promote more development, higher-density mixed-use development in the town center, that was presented as a possibility that would be seen as a good initiative for the planning board to be seen, you know. for the planning board to be seen, you know, that we are in fact promoting economic development, not putting our, our hands up all the time. And certainly, as we look at other towns around us that have town centers with more than a 35-foot cap, that occurs in other towns. Mixed-use development bylaws for, again, for walkable commercial and housing uses on a single site. The green infrastructure policy, this was a policy that I know our select board was really quite proud about when they passed it. But as we've mentioned previously, if we don't have the bylaws and the regulations to back up these policies, it doesn't, they're just nice policies. Certainly, the, well, mentioned there, short-term rentals. Andrea and I did attend a really interesting and thought-provoking FERCog webinar on basically, you know, Airbnb, short-term rentals, tax revenue that could, rental tax revenue that can come to the town, but also liabilities that the town might have by having unregulated short-term rentals. I could see how that could actually be a stepping stone in relation to the accessory apartment bylaws and the registry. Subdivision regulations, that's been mentioned in a number of areas. And it was interesting for me to look at our subdivision regulations, which are in fact in our handy-dandy book here, that subdivision regulations are changed and approved by a vote of the planning board, not at town meeting. To me, that almost feels like more of a, more of a responsibility, a burden.
We had someone who came and spoke to that when we were talking about the accessory, well, there was a person, there was some people for us, and really needed a bylaw talking about, sorry.
Subdivision?
Yeah, and multifamily development. So I know that there's a need for that because someone could be the foreassem for that. So maybe we can consider that that's actually been, you know, brought before us.
Right. One thing that was, it's not on the list that was mentioned to me today, was total review of our zoning bylaws, which could be quite a substantial challenge. The Deerfield Master Plan, I mean, we have referred to it in a number of, at a number of times. A master plan usually should be a long-term plan, although this long-term plan is approximately 21 years old. Yeah. 11 years old. Really? You think it's 2010?
Yeah, it was 2010.
Oh, okay. Well, that's cool-ish, cool-ish, okay. The Housing Production Plan from 2014, the processes, I think, are something that could potentially be more connected to town staff. Not that they need anything more to do, but our fee schedule, our application materials, especially now that we have a new site plan review bylaw, you know, being able to give our applicants very clear guidelines as to how they go about applying for special permits and for site plan review. We certainly have, I think, made a good dent with the orientation and ongoing education. One of the things that I'm aware of, FERCog as, you know, Andrea and I that attended some meetings, I know some of you have also. FERCog really has a wealth of assistance that they can offer us, but I don't think that most of us really know a lot about what that is. So potentially, they could just come as a guest.
And they actually have a menu, and I know it's not that menu, a menu that goes over six months, all the different places that you can go with different, you know, whatever. Dubedirt does a few, and actually Adam does a few. And their website is extensive, too. Right, as a large amount of information.
Yeah, and certainly seems like something for us to tap into more. We're working on how to develop stronger mechanisms for communications to and from residents. And also, as we noticed, I wonder, Denise and everyone was putting together the, not everyone, but hard work going into the handbook that we have a, we do have one document that says, "Responsibilities and duties of planning board members," and it's from 2011. And just gazing it.
And Annalee, that was, that was actually formulated by the planning board, so I don't think there's, yeah, so I mean, we can, we can take...
We can work on that, right. So if we want to have some conversation about those?
Can I add an additional?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
I'd like to add an additional one. I am curious about the properties that the town owns or is supposed to manage. And I'm wondering if we could have more information about those, perhaps a tour? For example, the senior centers, my understanding that if anyone can go in, they can only go in on one floor. I think it would be very helpful for us to know what's going on in that building in general, and then other buildings or properties that the town owns. And I'm saying that as a new member of the, of the planning board, but perhaps older members would also like to see that, or at least to see what condition things are in at this point.
Yes, I've put a request about that into Lily Dwight, and she's talking with the Town Common Beautification. Yes.
Well, those of us who are, who are new to the planning board, you know, it would be nice to have an up, maybe an updated meeting about that or...
Yeah, Annalee, I'm sorry, Jeff has his hand up.
Jeff?
Yes, on your town website, if you go on there, there's the Building Assessment Committee and the Town Stit, and it gives a fairly detailed description of the condition of your buildings, of your town buildings, and that would be helpful, that'd be a starting point. And Julie had talked, I think she's the chair of that committee, and, you know, maybe, maybe a meeting for additional information.
Great, thank you.
Also, the select board, they're looking at that, too. So.
Agreed.
Once again, maybe a little coordination, that's definitely helpful.
And Jeff, I think the last select board meeting, I think someone, there was a list of how many properties the town actually owns, and I was surprised at how many.
Right, that was, that was your senior housing committee. They pointed out how many properties. Obviously, some of that is available and could work for different situations for the town. Some of it is kind of like landlocked, so it's tough to really do much with it, but it's there, and, you know, there might be some building dealings and trade-off or whatever.
And it would just be nice to know where those are.
Just something to consider.
Potentially, if we could have some discussion if need be, or agreement on moving forward with updating or finalizing our solar bylaws? Is that something that everyone feels?
Yes.
So high priority?
I think that was, when we, maybe first through this, let's just get down to the book on that one thing, laundry, and then push that back.
Right.
We started with it.
So, otherwise, what?
I was just going to say, so, I mean, this is, this is a big laundry list, and I'm thinking, you know, I always like to look at things and prioritize. So, you know, we may not be able to prioritize that, prioritize that tonight. But when I was looking at the master plan, which is pretty extensive and somewhat outdated, you know, I looked to see how many people were involved, and there were maybe, I can't remember how many, maybe five different committees involved. So I think if we were able to break it down into various committees and to take a look and to start updating that. But then again, my question is, how have we utilized that? The master plan, and what, what is the value? I mean, I understand, I think I had a short conversation with Carolyn about that. I'd like to ask her again, but there was a specific reason why that was done? And I don't know if you remember that, Rach.
No.
If anybody does.
Well, my understanding also is that master plans in general, that that one costs about 80K.
I, I don't think that we need to enlist other people to, I think we need to, you know, maybe take a look, break it down to see exactly, you know, what the different components are, and then to really understand what the value of updating that is. You know, because I mean, you know, I've done business planning for 20 years, and it's like writing a business plan, that's great, but you don't just put it on the shelf. It's got to be something that's actually, you know, a usable document.
You don't just make one that's aspirational so much that you haven't really any intention of...
Although, again, the flip side of, excuse me, the, the flip side of having one with a lot of community engagement is, in fact, there's a lot of community engagement, and we have a chance then to see.
Right.
So, so maybe a good idea is for, if we're considering that, each of us to actually take a look, at least take a look at, you know, the various parts of the plan to see what they have. And I know there's just one copy town hall.
Oh, well, we have a, an electronic copy, but it's, I mean, it's huge for sending it to people. There's the executive summary also, which is 25 pages, which is huge enough.
So that's, that's something to consider, if that's something we want to dive into. I think I'd like to have another conversation with Carolyn to see actually where that went. Exactly.
Planning points or action points, you know? Did it stir anybody? That was the thing, the housing production, I was part of that, the housing production, that's why I... That's why the accessory apartments was part of it, because you talk about affordable housing. You're, you're making an assumption, it's like affordable is, sort of senior housing, affordable housing, these are all like, this is all just the same chameleon housing. That's very different. So I was reading the master plan that led me to these press remarks, that is, yeah. And, and one of the things that we discovered in 2014 was that there's not a lot of housing that is affordable for people to live here. So that's different than affordable housing, which comes to mind. So when it was discovered, like a teacher and somebody who just went to preschools, they wouldn't be able to live here. So you have a moment where you're, "Oh, that's a problem." So that was, that was part of the discussion, and it's a different concept of, you know, like, is there room in this town for housing that is not, you know? So the apartments was not meant to be affordable. It wasn't affordable senior housing, it was for senior housing. The idea was that if we're going to add a lot of traction to that.
Well, it is, our condos and, you know, multifamily housing, is that the way to introduce housing that people can afford, you know, as an accessory?
Accessory, yeah.
Well, accessory apartments is a first, that was just one, that's low lying.
Right, but I'm saying, like, is there a mosaic?
Yes, there's a mosaic available, and that's the idea. I mean, and I think some of it was, this is maybe part of the reason to, we're pushing for it because in fact, there is affordable housing that is in our town that's not on the books. And you kind of want that people see that that's there. So that you're saying, no, actually, we do have more housing that's affordable than people see because it's actually not on the books. Right, so then, you know, we push it underground. So I just think that that's part of the clarity of that, that my push there on accessory apartments isn't necessarily to make a whole lot more, more to understand that we do have something, that there may be more available. I mean, the other thing about accessory apartments is it allows for people to stay in their homes if they have that extra income. And so that's another little side piece, but anyway, I, I think that, to, to, that was part of the production plan, but another part of the production plan is to look at. Yeah, multifamily, where they would best, you know, where would they serve people? How would it fit with the structure of town, you know, major different places?
Yeah, I mean, I can see the Pandora's Box with this. We've already made a, a, a start and got some good feedback on accessory apartment bylaws. Is that, is that yet again, a place to, to go back and begin recognizing that there still is the question of condos and short-term rentals and the registry and affordable housing? Those are branches of that tree, and we're just dealing with one branch that we've already got a good start on, or what are people's?
I, I feel like they're all branches of the same tree. I feel it. You know, one of the things that I took away from FERCog training is, you know, as a planning board, what do we want our town to look like? Is that keeping the, part of the villaging and keeping the open spaces open, is that sort of allowing, you know, sort of this laissez-faire, people put up what they want, where they want? You know, how, how susceptible are we to outside developers? You know, depending on our, how much affordable for housing people can afford, we have available, and how do people flick? I think that there are people who don't want to put their apartments, they don't want them to, they're afraid that they're somehow going to be penalized through taxation or some other way if they sort of make known that they have an accessory apartment, or they have an apartment at all. Yeah, exactly. So like, let's make a deal, like, let's give them away that we can put these apartments on the books as affordable housing, for housing to afford, and allow them to sort of understand that they're not breaking the rules anymore. There are no rules against what they're doing, and in fact, that's a way that we want to promote people reading, having their own teeny weeny businesses in their homes.
FERCog gave a challenging but clearly well-informed webinar about this. I wonder if we could have FERCog either come to talk with us or one or two of us could talk with some of the people at FERCog, to see how they might suggest all of these ways of going about it?
I think you have it first, that they come and talk, and maybe some of it is shared, it's shared with the public.
Yeah.
Hear all of it. It, it, it's a, you know, you can see it from one angle, and then another angle, and another angle, and then you need to be able to, thinking about it from your point of view. And it's too easy to assign attention to that, if you have any input. So I think that's, that's worthy.
That would be, that would be a good, I think so, because it's clearly quite challenging.
And if we put it in the notebook, in the brief recorder, if the problem was coming, we know the thing.
Ah, great, come and listen. All right, I like that. The, and that ties in with subdivision regulations, the housing production plan, all of that, our accessory apartments, all of that, and how we might go next with that. That's nice. The select boards, the green infrastructure policy, the planning board has some assigned spots on it, and that's part of it being the subdivision regulations for green streets. Again, revising subdivision regulations to reduce curbing and promote storm water recharge onsite in bio swales. Promote solar-friendly layouts. So, you know, other than FERCog coming to talk with us also about the whole general piece, would that be something that we should tie into the, that FERCog discussion and see how it happens later? Maybe let's keep that in mind because that is part of what my understanding is, is that, you know, through the select board and the town, town people, that, that these green infrastructure policies are, policy is something that we want. It's quarter of nine now, maybe this is a good place to start with this, but in the meantime, if, oh, public comment, Alex.
Are you taking a public comment?
Sure.
All right, can you speak to the?
Speak to the town properties? How do you mean?
She is on the senior housing.
Oh, right, I'm on it too. Right, 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 right.
She's still on there?
Oh, she's, is she still raising her hands? I don't see Lili there, no.
Except in the upper left-hand corner.
Yes, her hand is. Oh, there she is, Lilly, hi.
There's a little tiny icon. Hi, Lilly.
Thank you. Unmute.
I'm muted.
Okay, I mean, I, I was raising my hand, because I could address some of the questions that came up on the, the town properties, but I, but you guys have moved on, so I, I just, but I will point out that this is the challenge of the hybrid, that I was actually able to answer the questions, but instead, the person who was in the room, you know, spoke about it, and so, so in other words, you didn't get it from the horse's mouth, but you got it from the guy who was at the meeting, but still, that was, my point is just that with these hybrid meetings, I think that it should be added that there, someone is really managing those of us who join remotely. Thank you.
So that somebody is watching the screen.
Yeah, we didn't see.
Or, or mom, who'd I get? Yeah. So things set like, you know, they're off, they're difficultly set, so that it makes a little tone when somebody puts their hand up, so that might, so if somebody on the board were running it, whether we'd be able to hear from them, maybe that's a purpose.
Jeff Buckland, Resling, sit on a couple committees in that, and I just want to clear the air with the planning board, to make sure that there's no misunderstanding here. Back when we had the select board meeting, the 22nd, I made some comments at the beginning of that meeting, and I discussed several things as far as, and very complimentary, as far as committees and people serving on committees. I made some comments about a quick call for a vote at the annual town meeting, and I will stand by those comments. During that time that I spoke, I never mentioned an individual, and I never mentioned a committee, and one member of the planning board decided to take me to task as far as maybe a misunderstanding, but accusing me of attacking the, excuse me, accused me of taking pot shots at the planning board and blaming the planning board for engineering the quick call. Once again, please review the video, I never said anything about the planning board or any other board, I never said anything about any individual, those comments, and I said, once again, I'll stand by those comments, were directed for two people that were sitting in this room that night. I will never criticize a board with the work that they do, and I just wanted to make that clear, to make sure that people understood that, and I'm taking the high road on this because I think it's appropriate, and I think as far as a person in this community, and as far as a board member on other boards, the idea is to work together as far as committees and try to do what's best for Deerfield. So I just want to make that clear, the intention was not anything to do with the planning board, and as I said, please, if you have any doubts, please go back and review that video, because that was not the intent, so.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I'd be willing to discuss it privately too.
Thank you, thank you. Other business, not reasonably anticipated, just an FYI to the planning board, at our last meeting, we did vote for the continuation of the LaScatti public hearings on October 4th, contingent upon their appearing before the conservation commission. We're now awaiting, or I'm awaiting confirmation from town council that LaScatti acknowledges that they have received this notice of continuation.
And do you know if they have a scheduled meeting this time?
Don't know anything at all, so waiting to hear from town council on that one. Secondly, one of the other things that I discovered when I was reading our proposed solar bylaws and looking at the old ones, is that in fact, every year at the beginning of the calendar year, there's supposed to be a, an annual report sent to many boards, select board, planning board, fire chief, building commissioner, on the status of the solar installation in regards to their maintenance plan, and that hasn't been received, and certainly is not.
Does that go to, to the building, it doesn't have to, I thought it goes?
Well, no, it goes, it's supposed, the way that our bylaws states, it should go to select board, planning board, fire chief, emergency management director, building commissioner, board of health and conservation commission.
So one report?
One report that goes to everyone, so I've asked Bob Walden and Casey to follow up on that, and like to make sure that we get that down here, that we're looking for it. Oh, and the other, and another thing with our reorg last week, one of the, we had a slight omission, the planning, with our planning board reorganization, FurCog does have a Franklin Regional County Planning Board.
Representative.
Representative, which has been me, I'm certainly, it's, it's, they've had really good information, I wouldn't, I, I'm fine continuing, but I also really would like to open it up if there needs to be an alternative, if I can't come to the meetings, or a co-representative, I think they're really a good, a good group, so if anyone would like to.
It's Thursday, right?
Well, the actual meetings are every two months.
I stopped receiving emails, but I thought I was still.
I took over for you.
Okay, I would be interested, I think there's, that's really fascinating, so.
Okay, so, unless.
Unless somebody else wants to, we have a turn, because it really is pretty informational.
No.
Yes, I agree, not yet.
Okay, all right, we can, we can buddy it up, and, um, I did not receive any mail Is, is there any other business reasonably anticipated, not reasonably anticipated for the hours in advance? So our next meetings, we are having, and there was a little bit of rescheduling connected to this, and there's been a little bit of confusion, but on Friday, July 23rd, at 10:00 here in person, our training session, and I think Denise, maybe you'll be working some with Denise's, huh? I mean, we need to sort of figure out what exactly our agenda is going to be for that. So if you have any specific, yeah, if you have any specific questions or requests, if you could forward them to.
Well, just now, I think it would be good for everyone to become familiar with the gigantic book, if you haven't, at least look at all the different sections, and then, you know, we'll go through, I mean, you know, when I spoke with, when I spoke, sorry, when I spoke with Jennifer about that, she said, obviously, you don't have to read every single thing, you just have to know where to find information, and I think some of it would be good to read through. So just become familiar with that, and then we'll go through that.
You can update them now, because there's changes.
Well, yes, and what, what will happen is, when we do have updates, any changes to zoning bylaws, anything, what we'll do is we'll add the new and just cross out the old.
So we keep it.
Exactly, yeah, so we'll, we'll discuss.
Yeah. We should figure out when we do a Zoom, we should figure out how.
Right, okay.
That'd be before our next meeting.
And so our next meet, right, our August meeting, August 2nd at 6:00 PM, executive session, and at 7:00 PM, a, apparently a hybrid meeting, at 7:00 PM, with certainly one of the things being the public hearing for Treehouse, and then Monday, September 13th, we won't have it at the first Monday of September because of Labor Day, but, so it would be Monday, September 13th, 7:00 PM. Andrew, did you have?
I just wanted to say that on August 2nd, I would definitely need to Zoom, because I won't be in town. I'm sorry?
But also for the.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, I won't be here for the executive session.
All right, so if there's nothing else, we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Oh, shoot, I second it.
Discussion, all those in favor? All right, thank everybody for your patience and to the community, thank you very much.